So I'd like to call the City of San Juan Baptista, City Council Meeting, Special Meeting of Tuesday, June 23, 2020, to session.
Your audio just died.
Our audio just died? It did? Oh, yeah. Sorry about that. Would you like to do the call out before we do anything? Yeah, I just need to do a little bit of maintenance here real quick. Okay. Make co-host, yes. And then Liz, she be, where is she going?
She's down at the bottom.
There she is. Co-host. Okay, they can help me manage in case someone tries to bomb us again. Okay, very good. Okay, so this is Don Reynolds, City Manager, I'm over here. I'm reporting out from closed session. And today, for Government Code 5.21, we have no reportable action taken during closed session today. Under the threat of litigation, we were talking about negotiations. So that's what we have to say about closed session today, and Mayor, take it from here. Okay, so, call to order?
Roll call.
A roll call? What we're gonna do? We have Pledge of Allegiance before closed session.
Can it still hold?
Can it still hold? Okay. A roll call. Mayor Edge? Here. Vice Mayor Jordan? Here. Councilmember De Vries?
Here.
Councilmember Flores?
Here.
Is that Cesar? No, that was Freeman. That was Freeman? Yeah. Councilmember Flores?
Here.
Councilmember Freeman?
Here.
A quorum is present. Thank you. Now we'll go on to public comment. Public is allowed to make a comment on items only on the agenda, and we'd like to remind you that you have three minutes to speak. And we are monitoring it so that everybody gets a fair chance to speak. So do we have anything, anyone wanting to make a public comment on anything that is on the agenda? You can either raise your hand on the participant screen, or just kind of say hello. It doesn't look like we have anybody. Okay, so if there is no public comment, we'll go on to action items. Approved Resolution 2020 XX authorizing a LEAP grant application to update the zoning ordinance for accessory dwelling units and to update the inclusionary housing element. So I need a... Okay, right, so, hold on, I'm trying to share my screen, but my screen is over here. There you go. And there we go.
Laura.
It's that one, right? Um, sorry, hold on. Why isn't it showing up? Slideshow, there we go. Resume slideshow, okay. Well, I'm just gonna... What is it? I don't know. Is it stopped? Well, the screen is larger than the... Uh-huh. That's the frustration, is that the screen isn't sizing upright. Hold on.
Laura.
I'm gonna have to hire an iPad.
I know. All right. I will get the slides up here shortly. So the first action item on tonight's agenda is one in a series of grants from the state of California. We're in receipt of a couple already. And let me pull my slides up and I'll share the status with you.
Hey Laura.
Seven A, Air City?
Wrong. I've got my nod.
Okay.
She said no.
Can't hear us?
Yeah, that's it, I'm on.
Why is that?
I don't think she meant that she couldn't hear us. She couldn't hear us from the C map.
From the C map, or from...
Yeah, not us.
Okay. Okay, well here's the summary I'm trying to get to. Thanks for your patience, I'm not sure exactly... So what does that mean, show slideshow?
There.
Resume slideshow, right?
Oh, that's good, okay.
Yeah, that's better.
Okay.
That's better. Okay.
And then maybe you should do slideshow and see.
So, I'm sorry, this isn't working for me today. This one? And then I get this icon that says... Okay, that's fine. Sorry.
Skip shot.
Yeah, the pictures aren't that sexy, not near as good as Dave Madias. So, thank you for your patience. The resolution before the council tonight is due July 1st, so we appreciate you squeezing it into your special meeting agenda. And it's for a state grant, State Housing and Community Development Department grant, referred to as the Local Early Action Planning Grant. Thank you. And this would be the second grant of this nature that we've received. The first one is our SB2 grant, which I've got here at $160,000. And just last week, we heard notice from Caltrans that we received a $230,000 grant for an active transportation plan. So we have a bunch of opportunities here to do some regional planning. We're also, of course, looking at the urban growth boundary, which aren't eligible for these grant programs. So four big programs moving forward. Active Transportation Plan is the Strategic Planning Committee's trail system that winds its way through all of our park and city assets out to the De Anza Trail and back. Would connect all of our cultural heritage and public facilities together. And that plan then will allow us to apply for active planning grants to literally build it. So that's a really exciting program, competitive grant that we received, noticed on last week. The SB2 grant was approved by the City Council last October. And that is for a specific plan for the Alameda, again, heading out towards De Anza Trail. So from Highway 156 intersection out into the De Anza Trail area. The $65,000 LEAP grant before us today is gonna help us implement, as you may recall, council, we brought back two housing elements to your approval last year. And in the process of bringing the two housing elements forward, we kind of opened Pandora's box on our zoning code and our community development. At the same time, the governor was approving all kinds of different housing bills and other things. And one of the things they were trying to do was provide funding to help us meet some of the low-income housing requirements that they're approving at the state level. So this LEAP grant money is available to help us promote, or increase, or make it easier for affordable housing to occur in our city. And so I worked with Harrison Associates, David Mack's team, and we put together a proposal to apply for these funds that would look at two things that are in need of immediate attention. And one is the accessory dwelling unit changes that the state approved, effective January 1. So we have till the end of the calendar year to amend our accessory dwelling unit standards and work with the community and come up with design guidelines. They can be larger than they used to be, there's exceptions to environmental, there's a bunch of different incentives to make it easier to put accessory dwelling units into infill projects. So that's one avenue that our city's already done three or four times. We have several accessory dwelling units in the city, especially in our new Copper Leaf development. They were encouraged there for affordable housing. So that's one project that we need to get moving forward on. And then also, while working on the housing element, we identified the need to update the inclusionary housing ordinance, and especially the in-loo fees. So that law, inclusionary housing, has been battered around the courts for quite some time. At one point, most cities' inclusionary housing laws had become obsolete as a result of court decisions. So we just want to go through the inclusionary housing ordinance to make sure that it's current, and that it's valid, and that the fees that it establishes are up to date and easy to renew. So we do have David Mack here today, he's online with us. David, is there anything you would want to add to that? If you could unmute yourself, or maybe I can unmute you?
Where is he?
I don't know. There he is, there he is. Thanks, David.
Somebody knocking on my door. I missed the last two or three minutes of what you said, Don.
Oh, no, I was just summarizing the LEAP grant itself and the application. And you helped us put the proposal together for the accessory dwelling units and the inclusionary housing ordinance. So I wondered if you had anything to add on those two ideas.
No, I think as Don said, that the LEAP grant money can be used to process both of those, which I think will be advantageous to the city to get those done. LEAP grant money is specifically used to, I don't wanna say promote growth, but allow controlled growth within cities. So the reworking of the accessory dwelling unit and putting permit processes in place to allow PTUs would meet the qualifications for the LEAP grant almost exactly.
Okay, thank you. And there is one other program, and it's called the Regional Program, REAP Grant. And John Freeman represents the city on the special Super Housing Cog. John, if I could, is there any status on creating the funding mechanisms for that? Have you heard anything recently?
I have been told by Heather at AMAG that it's in the works, and they're moving ahead with it, and that the funding is secure. So it's gonna take probably another, I'm not gonna guess how long it's gonna take to get down to us, but it'll come.
Okay, thank you. So that's pretty much my report, Mayor. The application is due in July, and it's not competitive, so we expect to receive it. Hopefully, we'll have a contract by the fall, and we'll be able to get to work amending those two ordinances in time for the December 31st deadline. Okay, good. Councilman Flores, do you have any questions or comments?
No questions.
Okay.
No questions.
Okay, thank you. And I'm gonna bypass you, Councilman Freeman, because you already had your opportunity to talk. And Councilman De Vries, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. I have two comments that I'd like to make. The first is that when I learned about these grants and how proactive the city was in going out to get them, I was just thrilled. I'm sure you all are also, everyone on this phone call is also, so create an opportunity here. The second thing, though, is I want to state simply, that I've said privately a lot, which is that it's my belief that both Mancho Vista and Copper Leaf short skirted our inclusionary housing ordinance quite a long time, to where they owe the city a lot of money. So what I have been thinking and advocating is an opportunity to revisit that issue with both developments, since neither one is completed yet, and revisit that process to see if we can get them to renegotiate and repay the city what they owe in those inclusionary fees, because those are big numbers, big numbers. And I would love to see that money come back into the city and to closely approximate what they should have paid for first expenses.
Okay, thank you. Do I have any public comment? Any public comment? Doesn't look like we have any. All right, so we have 17 people here. And no one is raising their hand, so if you do have any comments on this, let us know. Cara Bonk, go ahead, Cara. Well...
She's muted.
She's muted, pardon me.
Yeah, I'm pressing the button and it's not moving, so there you go. Why does it do that? Because, well, see, that little, that little blue thing keeps going. It keeps flipping back.
She needs to unmute herself. We've unmuted her, she needs to unmute herself.
Thank you. Cara, can you hear us? You need to unmute yourself.
Or take your hand down.
Well... Oh, there she is.
There she goes.
Okay. Go ahead, we can hear you now.
Okay, sorry about that, I'm just having computer problems.
Okay.
I was pressing unmute relentlessly with...
Okay, okay.
Okay, Councilman De Vries commented somewhat on this. When we discuss or review the inclusionary housing, can we also look at mandating a certain percentage of affordable housing? Because when they just pay in-loop fees, we never gather enough money to have... And I think that's come up before, too, that we should require them to build a certain percentage of inclusionary housing. That's my comment, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, anyone else? Doesn't look like we have anybody else, so we're gonna go on, and I need a motion?
I'll move.
Okay, thank you. Sessa Flores made that motion, I need a second?
I'll second it.
Leslie Jordan has seconded.
After the roll call vote, the motion was made by Councilmember Flores and seconded by Vice Mayor Jordan. Councilmember De Vries?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Edge?
Yes.
All members of the council being present, the motion as stated by the mayor passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, now we go on to affidavit of posting agenda, so I need a motion for that.
I make a motion to approve the affidavit of posting the agenda.
Thank you. I need a second?
Okay.
Okay, so Leslie Jordan has made the motion to approve it, and seconded by Sessa Flores.
Roll call vote, Councilmember De Vries?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Edge?
Yes.
All members of the council being present, the motion as stated by the mayor passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Now we go on to number four, discussion items. And A is COVID-19 update and Third Street transformation. Thank you, Mayor. I've got a few pictures up here from yesterday morning of the striping that occurred on Third Street. And in an effort to match with our colors and to avoid too many signs or too many stripes, we applied a pretty simple approach to painting Third Street, and we're beginning the transformation at last. So we began in May 19th, and here we are almost exactly a month later, and we're making progress. A member of people are getting used to the change, including city employees that were accidentally driving the wrong way. So I'm glad we don't have the oak barrels up yet. We're gonna fill them with sand, and that'll close, block in both ends of each of the four blocks. So it'll be 48 barrels of sand, and we can put succulents in the top, that's what we're planning to do. And since we did this, the community is super excited. We have approved one encroachment permit for Brube 25, and we have a couple more pending. I know we have Tammy's close to being done for Don Yester's, and I could let Liz talk on that if you'd like, Liz, on the status of the businesses moving out into the street. Are you able to just give us a brief summary? Liz, can you hear us?
I can, hold on.
I'm not sure that, I kind of surprised you, huh, I didn't tell you?
Yeah, you always do that. My boss likes to keep me on my toes, people. So we are doing, it's so exciting, I swear, it's like having a baby every time, I'm so excited. So we are working feverishly to get this done, and it's a process that we have set in place. We have our checks and balances, so nothing gets done unless our city engineer reviews it and approves it. And, you know, we have the proper insurance coverage, and we go out, myself, and typically, it's usually Nick, our public work supervisor. And we measure, and we talk about the plan, and we hear them out, and then we measure out the space. And it gets put into the system by our technician for, from the planning department, Minnie. She's great, you guys, if you haven't met her yet, make sure you meet her, she's here on Mondays and Wednesdays. And, yeah, we're just like a well-oiled machine, I think it's coming together. And the, there is about, probably gonna be four more in the works by the end of the week. We've got actually four in the works, possibly five. So within the next week and a half, we're probably gonna see a lot more out there. But it's gonna be great, I really feel like everyone is standing in solidarity, you know, trying to put that out there, even if they don't need the space, they're using it to show support and possibly have a place for passersby to sit or wait, or to maintain the six-feet distance in a happy, pleasing environment. So I'm excited to see how this turns out at the end. And so just support your local businesses, everyone, let's continue to help them get through this and to be able to expand and catch up on all the businesses that they have lost in this time through COVID. So, yeah, everyone, just keep your eyes open, and make sure you go the right way.
Can we ask who?
Can you what?
Ask who?
Oh, sure. Who's in process right now, Liz?
I just finished measuring out Daisy's, actually just a little, about an hour ago. Fran just got approved today, she has her heart permit, that's 325. And Tammy's is gonna be, Tammy with his Don Yester's, we just took down the side one, if you guys noticed that, you probably did. Those of you who weren't happy about it, it's gone now, she's gonna move her to the front. So that one is in process. And so, actually, she's wanting to have somebody go out. So hopefully, within the next couple of days, she'll be building hers out. And then we have Barr's Hideaway, and who else?
Lola? Is Lola's in?
I know Inaka's, Inaka's is working on theirs, on their paperwork. And I think that's it right now, for, and then the others are, I've sent out, oh, and Unamash is also asking for their paperwork, so I've sent them their paperwork as well. So basically, bars, bars are moving forward. And, well, Lola's, Lola's is gonna start working on her front one as well. As you can see, there's a picture there of her side one. So, yeah, this is happening, people, very exciting.
Very exciting.
Cool, thank you. Does the council have any questions, if Liz arrived regarding the businesses and moving forward? Thank you, Liz. Thank you for that report, Liz.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Flores, do you have any questions or comments?
The only comment I have, Mr. Chagis, cousin of City Manager earlier, was how are we gonna stay at five miles an hour on the motorcycle?
You can't, Second Street and Fourth Street.
I have the same question, I drive a diesel stick. I drive a six-deep, oh, Sessa, perdón, perdón, señor Flores, perdón. Perdóname, por favor, por favor. So, yeah, driving a stick, a diesel stick, and trying to stay at five miles an hour, I think I'm gonna burn out my clutch. Is there city funds to replace the clutch, I'm just wondering?
Well, and... No, I don't think so. And Sessa's... No, and so, Sessa, I'm wondering, could you, can you drive down, up and down Second Street and Fourth Street instead of Third Street?
Sure, that'd be the solution to that problem.
Okay.
Perfect.
But they want to park in front of the bars, they want to park in front of the arch. I didn't know a motorcycle couldn't go that slow.
They can, they'll fall over.
Oh, boy.
You're shifting gears, you gotta shift up here.
The only way you can keep it up is to rev, rev up the engine so that the centrifugal force of the engine keeps it upright, otherwise it'll fall over.
Take Franklin up?
Okay, well, I'm so sorry about that.
Or Washington, and go up the next street.
Was that all, was that all, Councilman Flores?
That's all, yeah, no problems. You know, just giving a heads up, you're gonna find bikes going at five miles an hour.
Okay, okay. So, Councilman Freeman, do you have any questions, comments?
Well, I think it's going great so far, and I just, I'm agreeing with Liz and Councilman Flores that five miles an hour is, let's just say, a bit unreasonable for a lot of vehicles. If you put your car, your drive, even with a automatic transmission, it's gonna go faster than five miles.
Oh.
With those...
Mine was hips.
I don't, okay.
Mine was at four.
All right. Okay, all right, thank you. Councilman De Vries, do you have any comments? Hello? Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, I have quite a few, actually. I'll start with what everyone else was talking about, the speed limit. Yes, five miles an hour, five miles per hour is pretty slow. We all agree that we want it to be this kind of a crawl experience going through there. As to whether a motorcycle can go at five miles an hour or not, I don't know, absolutely. But here's the thing, though, and I don't want to, I'm hesitant to say this publicly, but when you set a speed limit, everyone goes a little bit faster than the speed limit, it seems to me. You know, going to Gilroy, the speed limit is, you know, whatever it is, 65, and the flow of traffic is 70, 75, about 10 miles an hour faster than that. So if the real speed is gonna end up being 10, it seems like we should shoot low for what we post and what we require, realizing that it might be a little bit more than five, and that that might be okay. I have a question for Liz.
Yeah.
On the issue of the businesses that are, as Don put it, that's the same way I've been phrasing it, as you know, the businesses that are coming out on Third Street, would you say that's right now, just, I don't have to give you an easy way of answering this question, would you say that's fifty percent of the businesses or twenty-five percent or the majority of them? Where are we on that?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna take a poll tomorrow and, you know, I talked to all of them. I feel like just having the people that are that are moving forward quickly to do it, there's still people that are that are kind of, you know, on the fence.
And that makes sense.
Yeah. So I think that once they see it, the majority are gonna be going out there. I mean, the ones that that have concerns about parking and once, once I let them know that, yeah, there still will be parking and, you know, because they're worried about not having the the traffic. But I really do believe that, I think that the public is gonna be enjoying themselves. When you, when you do an outing, I know when I go somewhere, I, you know, like, let's just say you're going to Monterey, you're gonna go walk, you know, Canary Row or whatever. You park in a parking lot and you walk a long way. And before you know it, by the end of the day, you've walked quite a bit, you know. This isn't that much walking for people in parking. And we're still gonna have, obviously, we're still gonna have handicap parking. I feel like some of the problems that we're that we're questioning are really gonna be nonexistent. We have enough parking on the side streets and then with the additional parking that we're hoping to do, you know, the diagonal parking that we've been talking about, I think we're gonna be fine. And so once, once they see the participation, the ones that are on the fence, I think are gonna move over.
I, I
The other side.
I agree with you.
Yeah. I think it's more for than against. There's, there's just like a couple that aren't really, you know, that are saying, no, I'm not gonna do it. The majority of of them that aren't, that haven't done yet or haven't put their application in yet, they are, I think they're waiting to see.
Right. Any words from Pardines?
They don't need it, but they're thinking to stand in solidarity with the other restaurants. They're, they're discussing it.
Okay. Okay, great. And and you kind of hit on something that I was getting to, that's on my list here. Actually wrote notes this time. For those areas on Third Street that do not take advantage of the opportunity or if they're otherwise going to be vacant anyway, like I'm thinking of the Orchard, across from Daisy's, is the idea, and I forgot, Don, I meant to look at Keith Higgins' street design that he drew, but but just overall, can I ask, is the, is the idea that areas that are not going to be used by merchants and restaurants, is that gonna be there for turned into angled parking?
It'll be parking. The measurements don't facilitate angle. We would love it to be angled to fit more, but it's not gonna work out. So it'll just be regular parking, parallel.
Right. Why is that? Because if it was angled, it would extend too far into that new center line, that center lane, into the lane. It would come out too, too far into the lane.
Correct. Correct me if I'm wrong, Julie, but yes.
So I
Yes, you know, you are correct. If, sorry, this is Julie Bessad. Yes, if we were gonna go ahead and strive for angle parking, we needed about like maybe seventeen feet. And then not only that, you had, you still have to back it into a one-way travel lane. So unfortunately, we looked at it and no matter how we, you know, we were trying to maybe try to accommodate it, just have angled parking on one side, that the center line would have been shifted. So we have, we have really tried and looked at several options, but unfortunately, it didn't work out. But as Liz mentioned, that we are looking at two areas right now. One over at the Alameda, there's a section of the Alameda that is pretty wide. So we are looking into adding some parking there and as well as
Mucklet, Mucklet me in for it.
Yes.
Okay, Julie, let me ask you a question. So you're saying that you looked at the issue of angled parking in these blank areas on Third Street and you are convinced that there's no way possible angle parking on Third, no way possible? I gotta tell you, there's angled parking behind City Hall and that's not anyone's dream either. It's pretty tight when you go in there. But it works.
No, we, we, we have looked at it and as a matter of fact, that was one of the tasks that Keith Higgins, our traffic engineer, started looking at it. He was definitely was asked to look at providing angled parking. First, we looked at both sides of the street. Of course, there's not enough room. And he was trying to decide whether we could have angled parking on one side and maybe block parking on the other side. But unfortunately, no matter how we looked at it, we did not have enough room. So I am very convinced that, yes, we did give it a, it would have been a great option. It would have been, of course, accommodating more parking out in the downtown, but unfortunately, room-wise, it did not work.
That's too bad. That's bad news. That's very bad news to me. So then we just have to pivot, I guess, and think about auxiliary parking areas.
Better than parking.
Have identified some. I wanted to pass along an idea that Tammy Castaneda, the Dona's owner, passed along to me yesterday. And that is the idea, and this is just a concept, this is rhetorical, you don't have to, you know, discuss it, but just maybe people can start thinking about it. What if we got three or four golf carts and put them on our insurance policy and have them shuttle visitors, tourists, to our little lane area from these different parking areas? I thought, you know, that's not a bad idea. She suggested ANZAR students who have their driver's licenses and whatnot, who are, who need to use ANZAR or complete these community hours for their diploma. You know, whether that might be something that'd be nice to think about. I thought, that's not a bad idea. So as I said, no need for comment on that, just an idea. Next thing I wanted to talk about is, I got an email today from, or the other day, because I'm sure a lot of you guys did too, from an AVA company, I mean, AVA engineering company out of Palo Alto. And and Julie, are you reviewing the plans that are being submitted for these permits to be AVA compliant?
Hopefully, yes.
As a matter of fact, we did have a conversation about that today. Thank you for bringing that up. We are revisiting, basically, right now, what I'm looking at is I wanna make sure that when import permit comes in and they do have the insurance, they do call, you know, name the city as an additional insurer. And we haven't been, we are, you know, we haven't been focusing on the AVA component portion of it. But we did have a discussion about it today. We will continue to do that. And I believe I also, my conversation with Liz and we, probably tomorrow, we have a meeting with the business owners in the downtown. We will bring that up and we'll make sure that before this plan gets into reality and people, we have tables out there that we will address the AVA. But so far, we have, we have been talking about it, but we have not looked at it yet.
Okay. Well, it's something I think, just like you said, Julie, I think it's something we need to keep in mind.
Absolutely. No, that's a very valid point. I'm glad you brought it up. We have been discussing about it. It's, it's a pretty important issue. And so we are discussing it back and forth and we will come up with either language in our permits or we will discuss that with the business owner and we'll come back and we'll report to the council.
Okay, awesome.
One of the, one of the things too, in reference to that, Dan and Julie, is like, well, today when I was out at Daisy's and they have, you know, right in the corner of the clock shop between Daisy's area, there is a handicap parking space that's gonna get repainted and it turned around the other way because, yeah, the wheelchair needs to be facing the right way. But we looked, the guys and I looked directly across the street and there was another one there. And we were gonna talk about maybe we could find out if there's places, since it's the one way, maybe we could put it on the other side as well or add a couple more along the way. So that was something that we were gonna bring up with Julie and Don.
Okay, great. Yeah, we need to be always cognizant, sensitive towards accommodating our disabled community.
Absolutely.
Of course.
That's a important thing, yeah. Okay, next thing on my list is, I had floated out in, in text messages to some of you or maybe on social media or maybe all of the above. What would you guys think about the city creating a small stage? And when I say small, really small, like fifteen feet by twenty feet out of plywood, somewhere on Third Street, on the lane, where we could have jazz on the lane or mariachis on the lane or pretty, the country lane night or something like that? Somewhere where these musicians could perform while people are eating and strolling and sipping and enjoying our little community. And you don't have to really comment on that right now. I'm just throwing that out as an idea. I think that would be a really cool idea. I think it would enhance the ambiance of the whole thing. Next on my list is speed bumps. Julie, I know you and I and Don talked about that a little bit this afternoon. Can you give us an update on where we are with speed bumps? Are we gonna have them?
I, Don and I had a meeting this afternoon about it. There are some, oh, okay, there we go.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, John. Don, did I, did I jump you?
No, 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 no. I was, we talked this afternoon.
We're not gonna have speed bumps.
Well, that's why, that's why
No, we absolutely.
We're, we're
Go ahead.
No, go ahead, Julie.
Yeah. So I think as I discussed, we had a meeting about it. We kind of focused, focused on the type of the speed bump. We choose to go with the speed bump, which type is the one that the fire department referred. We have approached our striping company, it was Chris Company who did the striping for us. So we are go, you know, going back and forth with them. We're trying to select the proper kind that all the other fire department, police department also approves. And we're looking to get the prices from them. And we are looking at if, again, if we're big forward with them, maybe having four of them in, in between the, you know, the speed, the stop signs. And we certainly can report back to you once we have the price and we know which direction we're moving forward.
But, but so, but so far, it looks good, right? And, and by, I mean, these things, from what I've seen on amazon.com, are not expensive. They're like a hundred bucks each. And as I, as I told Don and I think you too, Julie, and I think the mayor, not only from the safety standpoint, but also from the perception of the public, the optics of us doing this, I think are really, really good and worth a pretty modest way of money. Because it looks like, if you just put these down, it looks like the city's paying attention to safety. It looks like the city cares about safety. It looks like the city's doing everything they can about safety. And, you know, if you're talking about a pretty modest amount of money, which from my understanding, it is a modest amount of money, it seems like it's a worthwhile thing to pursue. So I'm very encouraged to hear that you guys are pursuing that. And you're gonna give back to us, Julie, with more information on that?
Yes, absolutely. But once we have a price and, just to add to what you just mentioned right now, the other, you know, aspect of it that we need to also remember is to maintain it. Some of these, I had experience with some of these temporary speed bumps in the previous agency that I have worked with, that as far as the maintenance, it's gonna be an issue. Now, with this particular street here, since the speed limit is so low, we may not have as much, as many problems as we had with the other cities that I worked with. But certainly, we will look into maintaining the maintenance portion of it. We will look at the price. We will look at how many we need out there. We will discuss that with Keith. And once we have all the information, we can come back to the council and report back.
Well, that's right. And I, and I appreciate you drawing a distinction between putting a speed bump on a major thoroughfare where the speed limit is twenty, thirty, forty miles an hour versus a temp, not, I won't even call it temporary, but a speed bump on a little slow-moving country lane where people are supposed to be crawling along anyway. If there was ever gonna be a low maintenance environment to place one of these things, you would think that it would be on our little lane. And I think the last time I brought this up, you agree with me that a good example are the speed bumps that Joe and Julie Morris put up on the tree road. And those have been there now for years and I think they work great. They look great. They signaled to me as I'm driving up there, kind of go slow through here. Right, Mary?
Yes, Dan. But I, I remember Mr. Higgins talking about how expensive the speed bumps were and how we really didn't need them. So that's why I thought we didn't have, we didn't, we didn't continue to look into it. But if Julie is already, has already started and and perhaps, you know, there can be a solution, whether we have speed bumps or not. Yeah. So thank you. Were, were those all your questions and thoughts?
No, no, I had one more.
Okay.
I know. Don't, don't give me the floor. I'll take it back.
No, that's okay.
The last thing that I wanna, and again, this is also rhetorical, but I'm just throwing it out there so that it can all be in the back of our minds. We have to keep in mind our festivals in the future. As Don says, festival openings are gonna be, you know, phase thirteen or whatever, whatever the last phase is, the opening. So festivals aren't gonna happen for a while. Nonetheless, I've been in communication with Jason Williams a lot and he's a little bit insecure right now. Like, he's feeling like, oh, since you guys are doing this, are you pushing me out? Is, are there gonna be no festivals in San Juan in the future? And I said, no, 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 no. We're just coming up with kind of a new configuration of Third Street and we'll be able to fit you into that. But before we can fit you in, we have to first know what you fit into. And we have to first figure out how many stores. That's what I was asking Liz a little while ago. Stores and merchants and restaurants are gonna come out. What is the blank space is gonna be? Where does everything go? But I, I just pleaded with Jason. I said, please, just let us get this first part figured out. But we haven't forgotten you. We appreciate you. We love you in this community. We love the revenue that you bring to this community. And yeah, so I think you guys have an opportunity to pour a little bit of love over Jason. I think you'd be really appreciated right now. But we can't, and and then to all of us, we have to keep that in mind. What about the festivals in the future, you know? And the last thing on my list is the art of operations for the lane. Do we want to have a hard stop? For example, for music. So when I was meeting with Tammy Castaneda and Benny yesterday, her, the new bar manager at Dona's, she's gonna have outdoor speakers installed. She's gonna build this really cool bar top thing. It's gonna be neat. But at what, at what time on a Friday night or a Saturday night do we wanna have music stop? Do we want it to be ten o'clock? Do we have, I think, I think the hard stop at Eighteenth Barrel, for example, is ten. I think the hard stop at Arginis on the patio for weddings is ten. Should we just follow suit with that? That's question number one. Question number two is, do we also wanna have a hard stop for when the lane should be cleared? Or want people to be able to sit out there and by themselves until midnight or one o'clock in the morning or something? But what are the hours of operation for this outdoor, this break that we're creating? And then the last, last, I know I'm just saying the last thing. The last thing is, what are we dealing with? Don, Don already answered this question or a conversation I had with him this afternoon. But are we gonna make sure that level-one security company is on board and is gonna protect these investments that these people are making out there in the evening hours? You know, after everyone, after these hard stops, everybody's gone, the place is cleared. But Anaca, I think, I think Anaca's gonna spend a couple thousand dollars in creating their, their little parklet. It's gonna be super cool from what they told me last night. So that's an investment, right? And that doesn't need to be vandalized. And they don't need people running away with their umbrella, this or their this or that. So what kind of stepped-up security are we gonna have to protect the lane during the time that we're doing this? That's, that's also a question I have. And that's the end of my list, Mary.
Very good. Very good. Thank you so much for all of your ideas and your comments.
You're welcome.
And I, and I actually had thought of the, you know, the, the handicap parking. And because my dad is, you know, And because my dad, um, is in a wheelchair. And it's something that I wanted to point out, but we're thinking about it and talking about it right now. And our, um, handicap, um, curbs are not actually compliant. Because when he gets out, he, it's, it's difficult for my sister to get him out. Although, I mean, they haven't been to Donas and, and Hardenas for a long time. But, um, that's, that's something that we need to look into. So, yeah, thank you for all of your ideas.
You're welcome.
Okay, so.
Um, so does anyone have, uh, are there, any other council member comments, first of all, on, 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 uh, Third Street?
We, we, we got all, oh, I forgot you, I'm sorry.
That's okay. The only thing I, and I emailed, uh, somebody, uh, Dawn or the mayor, uh, about ADA accessibility.
Right, me. I shared that with Julie.
Okay, cool.
So Julie has that information and that's what got our mind.
Thank you.
That's probably the same thing Dan was referring to.
Yeah, so it's Julie who's going to be looking at making sure that, or, or our, um, city planner about ADA accessibility, right?
Right, it's Julie, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I didn't, I wasn't sure if Liz had that qualification.
Right, no, it's the engineer.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right. So, anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your comments. So now, uh, we'll go on to, uh.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. I have, oh, yeah, yeah, okay. So does anyone from the public want to say something?
Oh, public, well, Dan threw me off. Anybody from the public, is there anybody that would like to make a comment? Public comment?
On Third Street.
On Third Street, on our Third Street transformation? I have one more comment.
It sounded like someone's trying.
Huh?
Okay.
Someone's trying?
No, I think we're okay.
Okay. Okay, so Councilman, uh, Jordan has one more comment.
Uh, Dan, to your point about the hard stop, uh, we have a, an ordinance that says it's ten PM. And I think that we should, uh, keep that going forward.
Right, right.
Especially since we're moving outside, that's going to affect everybody.
And, and that's what we practice at the community hall and, and we should practice, yeah, we should follow our ordinance, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, clarifying question on that. So that's, that's a ten, that's a proposed ten PM hard stop for music, right?
Yes.
Music cuts off, outdoor speakers, musicians, everything cuts off on the lane.
Everything, everything on the.
What about, what about people who want to sit out there and enjoy their margarita and their tostada past that time? Are they free to do that?
Well, there won't be any tostadas because the restaurants close at nine.
Uh, I would imagine it's whatever time the restaurant or bar closes. Closing time.
But, right, but that begs the question, though. What if, what if a restaurant or bar like Santana Row, they'll serve till midnight on something to eat out there in their little cool outdoor area? What if a restaurant or bar wants to offer food past ten o'clock? Till eleven, midnight? In other words, do we as, do we as a city want to, do we as a city want to set that, that regulation? Or should we leave it to the bars and restaurants to figure out on their own?
You know, you know what, Dan, that's a, that's a good point. And I think we need to look into it, um, because we don't want to have, you know, people out there at, you know, two, three o'clock in the morning.
Well, and we have our business forum tomorrow morning at nine, so we can, we can bounce it around.
Yeah.
That's the beauty of, of that, that whole structure is, is we let the business owners tell us what they need.
Right. Okay. Okay, thank you. So, um, if we don't have any further comments, we're going to go on to strategy for delinquent.
I'm sorry, can I jump in and make a comment?
Yes.
Sure, Julie.
Yes, I'm sorry. Just want to, yeah, I, I know we're all, all been busy working, uh, transforming, you know, Third Street. But, uh, I just want to make sure that everybody's aware that we still have a construction project on the other side of the, you know, Macaulay. And what we have been doing is, we've been trying to work with our contractor very closely to make sure that if we have any activities that is close to Macaulay and Third Street, that we will work on those certain activities, you know, giving, uh, an opportunity for the Third Street, you know, transformation to kind of like settle in. And then if we need to get closer to Macaulay and Third Street, work on any kind of utilities, we're planning on delaying those activities maybe till next week, till things are kind of settling down. So I just want to. That we do have a project that is moving along, but we're trying to, uh, work with both the contractors and coordinate with them, so we're not missing activities and it gets confusing. But that's all I had to report.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Julie. Okay, so without any other, uh, comments or questions on our Third Street transformation, we're going to go on to strategy to delinquent utility pairs.
Thank you, Mayor. A council member asked me for some hard data on our delinquency and I'm, and I'm glad he did. And I had a chance to work with staff and put this little chart together for the city council. Um, our accounts receivable is, is higher than, than usual, higher, higher than it ever has been. And I think I used the number sixty thousand dollars. But that's all of our accounts receivable is, this is the number right now for all of the people who are late paying their water bills. It's still a lot. You show the number of people are the red numbers, um, the number of clients. And then, uh, on the right, you have a thirty-three thousand dollar total. And then across the bottom is, is just an average, uh, of the sixty-five people. They owe an average of two hundred and nine dollars, two hundred and twenty-four dollars. Those, of course, who are ninety days late, uh, owe, owe a little more per average. A lot of these are the same people. So as I go through the eighteen pages of, of delinquents, I'll see the, 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 the family name and then there'll be both thirty, sixty, and ninety days. So of the hundred and thirty, um, I'm guessing there's closer to like thirty-five or forty, uh, people altogether. This does not include late fees, of course. We waived late fees. We've researched some other, uh, utilities to see what they're doing. And, uh, Rochelle Egan, Egan, our, uh, lead library technician, did some research and, uh, had the idea of actually just going door-to-door and talking, uh, with some of these folks and seeing, oh, we could help them. And, and that idea has evolved, um, and our city treasurer Chuck Hager got all excited. And so, um, they teamed up today and did some brainstorming. And, um, this is, this is pretty much the, the schedule that Rochelle and Chuck came up with today. And, um, uh, that they would work on a draft letter and of course, that letter would be translated. So right now, our, our door hangers basically say, you're late and if you don't pay in forty-eight hours, we're going to shut you off. So that's a pretty hard message.
We're not.
But we're not, we're not using the door hangers at all. But so, rather than just going back to door hangers, we're, we're talking about a much softer approach. And we're also talking about doing some research, um, with the community action board, um, because some of this money that the county is in receipt of has been, uh, provided to help residents with the utilities. So we could even help facilitate them to access those funds. Um, and so, I, I just really appreciate Rochelle's, uh, enthusiasm and interest in, in this, in this soft approach. It's much more humane and, and, uh, and, and shows the residents we care first about them. But, but, you know, if this problem gets, uh, if this goes four, five, six months, it's going to be a lot of money. And so we're going to have to work on some kind of repayment agreement or some kind of special situation there, unless we can get the county to help and, and, and actually pay these back debts. So, so these are some of the things that we brainstormed at our ten o'clock meeting, Mayor. You were a part of that meeting. And this is the plan that, that, uh, that Chuck and Rochelle put together. So, uh, we think we could cover all, all of these homes within, uh, within, uh, thirty days, or pardon me, a week or so, and, and try and, uh, get to the residents and talk to them personally about, about how to best manage the situation. So with that, um, I'm taking notes. If the council has any ideas or strategies that we could, uh, we could, appreciate your input and your feedback.
So, okay, so now I guess we can, do you want to say something?
I, I have a question. Is the cost to cover the door-to-door going to be recouped, hopefully, through, uh, our CARES money? Um, because we're paying an outside contractor?
Um, no, we, we're paying, well, we're paying Rochelle her, her salary. And then Chuck is volunteering.
Okay. Thank you, Chuck.
That's our treasurer at work for us there. He's trying to get re-elected, I guess. I don't know.
So I'll work backward this time. So, uh, Mr. De Vries, would you like to comment on that?
No, not at all. No comments.
Okay. Councilman Freeman?
Uh, I would like, uh, City Manager Rails was mentioning, uh, that the cap board has a, uh, fund of well over three thousand dollars for, uh, utility assistance to, to all people in the county who need help, uh, paying their bills. And that would certainly include us. And so I'd like to see us get, um, some of our share. I feel we should probably carve out the ones, um, in most need. And maybe that would be the ones that are sixty or ninety days in arrears. That's kind of easy to do. And, um, I'm not quite absolutely, it, I think it ends up being a grant to the individual, but I don't know how it works mechanically. The money just comes straight to the city or, or to PG&E? Because it's also for PJV bills too. But there, there is a considerable amount of money, uh, that, uh, that, that's been distributed to the county for, for this reason. And, uh, I think, I certainly think that we, uh, need to make use of it for our people who, uh, are having trouble.
Okay, thank you. Councilman, uh, Flores?
No comment.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
Oh, Dan, did you have, oh, Dan.
He did.
How already did?
We're good, sorry. Sorry.
I, I worked backward this time.
That's right.
Okay, do we have any public comment? Or question? Okay.
Hi, it's Michelle.
Oh, hi.
Michelle.
Hi, my name's Michelle Sabatia, new to the community. Um, I just thought I would provide some insight, maybe, um, since we're thinking of potentially drafting a letter? If that's the approach that we want to take, um, have we considered trying to give a call to the individuals that are past due? Um, to see what the situation is and maybe gain some insight there for each individual and see the trends? And if we want to apply a grant to those individuals, then before we just grant the, before we give the grants, we can evaluate who it is that actually needs it before just paying it off for them? And then, um, my other concern, not a concern, but just more of, uh, wanting to relay a message is, I think I've noticed some inconsistencies in the water bill sometimes. Um, we are individuals that pay via online and we have our receipts and we save our receipts. And we always receive notices that are stating past due. So, um, we always have to call the city for letting them know that the water bill has been paid. So I think, um, just cross-checking the numbers to making sure that what is past due has really been paid or has not been paid. Um, that's it.
Okay, Michelle?
Yes.
Can you spell your last name for me?
It's right there, Sabatia?
Uh, yeah, it's, um, Sabatia, S-A-B-A-T-H-I-A.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And thank you for your comment. Thank you for sharing. Anyone else?
There's sixteen people online? Nope.
Okay.
I do have one thing I have to do. Before we leave the COVID item, I have to do my.
Okay.
My thing, so, okay. Just one last thing, Mayor, uh, before we go. Per our municipal code, Article Five, Section Thirty-three oh four oh, uh, as the emergency services director, um, the city, I'm asking the city council to review at least every twenty-one days until the local emergency is terminated if the need for continuing the local emergency still exists and to proclaim the termination of the emergency at, at its early possible date. I think, um, we've seen numbers in our community of positive testing increase. And so, uh, the state and the county both have kept their emergency orders intact and so we should be.
Yes. So do we?
That's all I have to do.
That's, okay, all right, good, all right. So then now, um, we need to adjourn. So.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Second? All right, so, uh, Councilman Jordan made the motion and, uh, seconded by, uh, Flores. So meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Well done, well done.